Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone. To my right is the Honorable Amir Farroki and to my left is the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. At this time, we will have public comment. First speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan. Good afternoon, I think we can start our public comment. Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. Everybody used that as a dumping. I would just like to request.
So tomorrow is City Utilities and our City Utilities Chairperson is here, the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
What time tomorrow?
10:00 AM.
I'll be here.
Please join us tomorrow, but in the meantime, please send that to Commissioner Garman so that he can be aware of her concerns before tomorrow.
What do Madam Chair?
She said dumping and also large drums.
Yes, dumping, large drums, overgrowing trees, which is not part of the property of the people that's parking, it's actually the city. And I've been back and forth with them.
So that is on private property or public property?
Public property, sidewalks, and there is a little lot spot, it's not a lot, it's a spot. It drives up into where they do parking, but it's also fenced off where they can't really go in and out of it.
We also have code enforcement here, Ms. Louse. If you would talk with her, but I want to see you tomorrow morning so that those folks that are responsible for that will be at the City Utilities Meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM if your schedule will allow. But I'd like for you to get Ms. Louse's phone number, exchange numbers with her so that we can assist you with beautifying your community. And thank you so much for being here today. We appreciate that.
God bless.
We will be taking our legislative items first. We are waiting on a quorum. We are waiting on a quorum at the moment. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, the vote is still open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, the agenda has been adopted.
Motion to adopt the minutes by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays, the minutes have been approved. Madam Chair, this takes us to our consent agenda, Section G Communications, Item Number 124C5149. A communication from Dr. Michael Hodge, Executive Director, Atlanta University Center Consultorium Incorporated, submitting the appointment of Mr. Marcus Washington to serve as a member of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. This appointment's for a term of three years.
Is Mr. Washington present today? Please come forward and tell us why you would like to serve on this very important board of the City of Atlanta, the Atlanta Citizens Review Board.
Yes, thank you for your opportunity. My name is Marcus Washington. I am a 2019 graduate of Morehouse College. I also serve as the Senior Community Director at Morehouse College, currently working in the Department of Housing and Residential Education. And some of the stakeholders that I work with actually include Morehouse College Police Department. And the reason I want to serve is because I recognize my fortune in life and I recognize that I've been fortunate enough to graduate from college and I recognize that I've been fortunate enough to have favorable outcomes with law enforcement. And I recognize that there are many brothers who look like me, brothers and sisters who look like me, who may not have had that same fortune. And I would love to advocate on their behalf. Simultaneously, working at the Atlanta University Center Consortium with Morehouse College Police Department very closely. I do respect and value the work that they do and I recognize that their commitment has an impact on the community. And so I would also like to advocate for those who may be falsely accused.
Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by myself, congratulations, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you. Congratulations.
Item Number 224C5150. A communication from Zagara Jones, President, Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, submitting the appointment of Mr. Cheyenne Moran Jr. to serve on the Atlanta Citizen Review Board in the Neighborhood Planning Unit Group, G through L category. This appointment's for a term of three years.
Please come forward. Mr. Jones, tell us why you would like to serve on this very important board.
Good afternoon, my name's Cheyenne Moran. I truly believe that the simple choice of putting on a badge should neither subject you to being a target of the community, nor should it provide you a shield to be a tyrant within the community. And much like the last gentleman, there are some privileges I've had in life that provide me the ability to lend my voice to people who may not have one.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Thank you so much for willing to serve on this very important board. Thank you, Mr. Moran, thank you. I'll make a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims, 1 through 39. Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, the unfavorable claims have been adverse.
Next item?
This takes us to our regular agenda, Section I, ordinance for second reading, Item Number 12401688. Renorned by Councilman Byron D. Amos to waive the provisions of Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10-20209, CND, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, so as to modify the hours of operation on Monday, January 20th, 2025, for the College Football Playoff National Championship Game, only for all licensed establishments authorized to sell alcoholic beverages on the premises, consumption, and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Next item?
Takes us to Section J Resolutions, Item Number 224R4654. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta Department of Police employee Sabrina Thomas, retired Crime Prevention Inspector Senior, under Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone, the vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Item Number 324R4655. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to exercise a second renewal option for agreement listed herein, citywide contract for demolition and asbestos abatement services with Kissburg Construction Incorporated, Southern Demolition and Environmental Incorporated, and Max Holling Incorporated, on behalf of the City of Atlanta Police Department, Department of City Plan, and Department of Enterprise Asset Management, and Department of Parks and Recreation, for a term effective one year from February 20th, 2025, through February 19th, 2026, an amount not to exceed $4,897,975.00 for all contractors. All contractor will be charged, sued, and paid from the accounts listed below and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion? Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, we have one item coming off held, Item Number 13 on Page 12, may I sound the caption?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this item requires a substitute, the substitute changes the caption. May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute?
Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please sound the caption.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, substitute before you. Item Number 132401578. Renorned by Councilman Alex Juan and substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, renorned to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances at Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 3, to allow the mayor to issue temporary permits authorizing bona fide nonprofit civic organizations to sell alcoholic beverages for the consumption of, on the premises for a period not to exceed three days, to allow the mayor to issue no more than six temporary permits to annual license holders within one calendar year, to allow the mayor to issue no more than six temporary permits to allow for wine tastings within one calendar year, to correct the city code of ordinances referenced contained in the provisions related to the temporary permits related to the approved outdoor festivals and for other purposes.
Okay, we have folks from the nightlife here. I see them in the audience, could you all come forward? Give us information on this. Please give us your name and your position and tell us about this.
Yep, Kristen Edwards, nightlife manager. So we met with the nightlife advisory council and they have agreed to move forward with all of the changes that Councilmember Juan and ATAG has presented.
Moved by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, seconded by the Honorable Amir Faroki, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable on substitute. Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative items, we can continue on to our presentations.
Mr. Johnson, will you please give us information on the tour for this Thursday at 11:00 AM? And those that are interested in attending the tour, please let Mr. Johnson know. Provide information on the tour, ACDC?
Yes, there will be a tour on Thursday, December 12th at 11:00 AM. The Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee is welcome to take a tour of ACDC in the new Divergent Center. It'll be hosted by the Department of Corrections. If you'd like to attend, please.
That is this Thursday, 11:00 AM, please meet on Trinity Avenue, all those that are interested in touring the facility. And now we will have our crime stats. APD, Chief Smith, please come on up, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. So, closing out week 49, as we come to the end of December, the department stands at minus 4% down for year-to-date crimes. Last week, we did see an uptick in theft from vehicle, which kind of is no surprise. We've been talking about that as the holidays are upon us, so please be careful. Please, please continue to push the Clean Car Campaign. I also want to touch on a few other things, with robbery being down 12% and our vehicle thefts being down 27% for the year. We're very proud of that. As you know, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of problems with Hondas and so we're hopefully turning a corner there with some of the strategies we've employed. I do also want to say, as we come across the holidays, to really push out to your constituents frauds, especially by through cellphone, right? We all get these text messages, they seem strange. Anybody asking for money, please do not respond. If it's from a credit card company, you think it's from a credit card company, call the number on the back of your credit card, don't respond to the text message. If you could just push out little information like that, especially with our senior population, we kind of see those things on an uptick and they're a little more susceptible. I do want to point out a few good works from the department, including Saturday, which as we know is the SCC championship game and the Georgia Bulldogs were successful. We had about 100,000 people in that downtown space, along with that, with a high-profile concert and the game kind of overlapping at the same time. Really kudos to Zone 5, who was on 12-hour shifts for the day, and some of our other specialized units that helped out Apex and Ace and were really active in that area. We had people on footbeats, it was, if you were out and about, you saw police presence everywhere, which is kind of what we wanted. It was very successful for that event. And just a few, I got to touch, wanted to touch on a few good works. Over the weekend, there was a pedestrian robbery over in Zone 3. And immediately officers were able to get up on the cameras and our LPRs and then we were able to also get some undercovers involved and were able to take Contravious Hunter into custody. And it was a very good arrest, great teamwork by multiple units throughout the city. I also want to highlight, over the weekend, we had Zone 2 that was doing a undercover drug detail and had purchased narcotics from a gentleman and then that person was taken into custody, had over 300 grams of marijuana on him. He had an outstanding warrant from Cobb County Sheriff, outstanding warrant from Clayton County Sheriff, had a criminal history as convicted felon, he also had a loaded Glock on him at the time. So that was a great arrest. Again, you see details, it was very dangerous, but a very good outcome. So kudos to Zone 2. And I want to point out that during the game, while we was enjoying the game and the concerts, Zone 1, Zone 4, and Apex were doing a joint collaboration detail to fight some theft from auto crimes that as we talked about, a little bit of an uptick. And while they were in the area of Zone 1, they noticed a blue vehicle. It had fled from police prior, the day before. They saw that vehicle, again, they were able to get Phoenix up in the area. They were able to get plainclothes officers with eyes on the vehicle and were able to arrest two subjects which had committed a robbery earlier in the day. So that was a great effort on that part. During that same detail, later on in the night, there was a gray vehicle that was recently stolen that popped up on the camera system. Again, with Phoenix, multiple undercover units and the collaboration of Apex, Zone 1, and Zone 4, they were able to take three out of four subjects into custody after a traffic stop. And in that vehicle, they discovered multiple tools that are used to break into vehicles. So those are some very good arrests for the weekend that we hope are going to impact crime as we're heading out to close out the last few weeks of the year. And that is my overview. I'm happy to take any questions that the body may have today.
Do we have any questions, the Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Thank you for your report. Just want to make sure I ask about the upgrades in technology to see if we've made any advances towards it. I've been able to work with a, always inspired by the councilman from District 2 and to see his public-private partnership, working with the private organization that hired Sparky. And so I've been able to work with a organization in 445 Cleveland Avenue Apartments in my district and we've been able to secure Beth. And so we have two Beths and we will have the robot dogs that will be in the parking lot to protect against the theft and try to prevent more theft, break-ins of cars. I want to know, have the, we've been able to do that, just working with a smaller company in the City of Atlanta. I just want to know if APD have been able to make any advances.
So I know you've asked about this before and we're into the idea, we're started to kind of research and we have a meeting this week with the company. And as you know, procurement and all this, you know, it's a process, right? So, but we are absolutely exploring that and we're starting preliminary discussions. And again, we got to vet everything to see where the technology is and make sure we're very careful in what we buy and make sure we're very cognizant and with the money that it's going to take. And so, so we're absolutely looking at that and I'm excited for it. I think it's a good use of technology, so for sure, we'll definitely keep you posted on where those go.
Just want to be as fast as possible, even the, I've been told by some of the constituents in my district that Arthur Blank has them at the Mercedes-Benz Dome. And so I don't know if you've seen those or not.
I have not seen the ones at the Mercedes-Benz.
So if everybody else is doing, I just, Cobb County's done, I just want to make sure APD.
Well, Cobb County's in a pilot program. And that's, they're in a pilot program, it's a 90-day program, 45 days inside the jail and 45 days outside the jail. I've been in contact with. I've been in contact with the person that is running that pilot program to see kind of how it goes. So we are definitely exploring these options to see how we can utilize it.
I'm happy to know where we are now compared to where we were when I first started bringing this up. At least I know we're there. But Beth was $5,000. One private organization got a couple of them in some apartments in my district. I would love to... Just keep moving fast on this. Thank you again.
Yes, sir.
The Honorable Matt Westmoreland. The Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Deputy Chief, for your presentation. I wanted to ask you, is there any update on the activities going on on Commercial Avenue that have been reported here in the committee? Can you give us any update on what's happening?
Uh, no, I will get an update for you. I'll contact you with any activities that we've seen and any enforcement that we've done. I know we had tasked our CSU team over there with looking at the area, and I'll get an update for you on that.
Yeah, this is like the second time I've asked about it, and the residents are still... They're still loose and, I guess, unrestricted pit bulls in the area. They're still operating the... Apparently, the, I guess, chop shop or gypsy repair shop on the street, and there's still a lot of noise violations. And of course, you know, right in that strip of commercial, it is primarily senior citizens all along that strip. And so there... I know the media did a story about it a few weeks ago. Those residents, they did see some improvement, but the activity seemed to be creeping back up.
Creeping back up. I got you.
Right. They weren't completely stepped out either. Wanted to make sure that there... I'm sure there's some housing code violations, or at least they have to be code violations if they got these junk vehicles on the property in several yards, and of course, the loose animals.
I'll see what I can put together with the detail, especially about the animals and the properties.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, I know we're in the holiday season, as you mentioned. In the past, both AFRD and APD have, I guess, put something on the social media pages about tips. Have you all done that yet, and if not...
I believe we have, but let me check to make sure. But I know we're constantly messaging that, and I know with our holiday plan, we did a press conference last week about all the enforcement measures, everybody being uniform, the proactive patrols, and the kind of things we'd be doing. I'll make sure our social media blasts that out.
And you forward that to members of the councils, so that we can, in turn, share it on our social media?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Now, I do want to compliment you all on handling the large events that have taken place. I live in the downtown area, and it seems that there's always more and more people coming downtown. And so, there was a... We've established two entertainment districts around these two bowl games that are coming. Can you elaborate on what that's going to mean and what resources we're going to have to put in place?
So the resources, it's going to be all hands on deck for those two days. So we're going to have every available officer will be working. The special... We have... Chief Hampton is overseeing the planning of that event, and there's... You know, we could get into the granular level if you want, but every officer is going to be assigned, both entertainment districts, there'll be traffic posts, there'll be roving patrols, there'll be react teams, there'll be helicopter, our motormen. All of our resources will be dedicated to those events for those two days.
Okay. And then just lastly, I know that our city attorney gave her best explanation. She didn't... But she admitted she didn't have any real-world experience dealing with trying to get a warrant on someone who is at greater detention. And so I would assume, if you could explain from an officer's perspective, how that would work. Now, this would have taken... The incident that's referenced would have taken place with South Fulton Police, not because they're the ones that responded to the incident. But can you explain to us what that means, when that happens? Because obviously, the person, if you need to obtain a warrant, then it goes without saying, this person has, at a minimum, has refused a breathalyzer test. So can you elaborate for us what that means?
Yes. So, and again, and I'll reiterate that the Atlanta Police did not offer that search warrant. They did not execute that search warrant. They had nothing to do with that search warrant. We're not over the purview of anything having to do with that search warrant. A typical search warrant is issued to an officer through the Fulton County Court system, which is called the EWI system. That's where they sit at a computer terminal, and they interview the judge, they do the write-up. The judge reviews the warrant, they review the probable cause. And when the judge signs the warrant, it is put into the system, is processed through the system, and the officer gets a copy of the warrant. So the officer can take that copy down to Grady, and then to make sure that it is served to the proper personnel, and that everybody has a copy of the warrant. Now, there's two different situations. There's a situation where the officer who's making the arrest can go obtain the warrant with the subject, right? And then bring him down to the hospital at the same time. There's also a scenario where another officer can be with the... At the hospital with the person, and then there's a warrant that's obtained at another location, and then the warrant has to be brought to the hospital, okay? So, I don't know what happened that night. I can't speak to it. But those are the kind of the two most common instances that we have when we serve a search warrant at the hospital for a subject along those lines.
How common is it for people to refuse a breathalyzer?
It's fairly common. It's fairly common. And that, when somebody refuses a breathalyzer, there's an automatic, I think it's a year suspension. It's almost like a... There's an automatic set of circumsets that take place as soon as you refuse that breathalyzer of consequences. Because driving is considered... It's not a right. It's a privilege granted to you by the state. So we all have to abide by the parameters. And in state law, if you refuse the breathalyzer, then there's automatic consequences that take place for that refusal.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for explaining that.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I'll withdraw, Madam Chair.
Next, the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
As it gets... Starts getting a little bit darker a little bit earlier, just want to remind police officers that we did pass the... If you can, send out a reminder about the blue lights.
Of course, the cruise lights.
Yep. If possible, if we can get as many officers as possible riding with their lights on. We do know it's getting a little bit dark a little earlier, and it makes people feel a little bit safer.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We do have a handout for the Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department. Deputy Chief Hampton is here. We will take this home over the break, review it, and then we will have a presentation, the first meeting from Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department. We also would like to keep Ms. Claudia Nash, who is a strong community leader, in our prayers. Please keep Ms. Claudia Nash in your prayers. She is definitely dealing with some health issues right now. Hopefully, she will be back in the new year. But please keep Ms. Claudia Nash in your prayers. Ms. Nash, you mean so much to the citizens of Atlanta, and we love you. That is Claudia Nash. Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. And I also want to tell Ms. Nash, get some rest, because after last Monday's meeting, I saw her back out in the community at our event on Friday. So we do want Ms. Nash to have ready healing, but we also want you to rest, Ms. Nash, so that you can heal.
Yes.
You know, she is an ardent public servant here in Atlanta with AFRD.
Yes, she is.
And we want you to come back full speed, so take it easy. And we want to implore the chief, maybe he needs to make her take some time.
Yes, and take...
Put her feet up.
This very well-done presentation home with everyone. We will come back for our first meeting. This is our last meeting of the year. Next, the Department of Law Attorney, Patrice Perkins Hooker, City of Atlanta Law Department, presentation.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am here on behalf of the 80 people who serve the City of Atlanta and address all of the legal issues associated with the city's operations from City Hall all the way down to the airport. You all have been provided a copy of our presentation, and I'll go through it. And then, if you have any questions, please let me know, and we'll respond to them. This is an update, next slide, I guess I got. This is an update since November, October the 14th. The first one is with our division matrix. As you know, we have five divisions in order to try to handle all of the matters for the city. The first one is litigation, and we have a total of 444 litigation matters that are active in the City of Atlanta. 161 of those are being handled in-house, and 283 were sent out to outside counsel. It's a pretty large section in our department, and they've been pretty active. As you can see, on your agenda, you have several claims that have to be processed and approved or denied, and that's the result of that particular team. And the claims team is a part of the litigation unit, and we had 157 new claims opened in the first quarter, and we have resolved 293. And that has actually resulted in a significant savings for the city, because it's about 2/3 of the amount of money that's been claimed, we actually have to approve being paid out. And those are for damages people sustain from various types of interaction with city structures, infrastructures, or people. The next one is the quiet title actions that are being initiated. As you know, we have quite a few matters that the city has brought into by either condenations or people trying to get monies from property, that they're trying to get the title cleared up in property, and we have actual liens for outstanding taxes, outstanding demolition liens, et cetera. But we ended up getting 32,000 of the 339,000 we applied for just in last quarter. Some of that money may come in in subsequent quarters. The next division is our contracts matters, and we had 267 contracts that we reviewed, and we provided a lovely little schedule for you of the departments that utilize these services and what we do with them. But we basically process all of the contracts that come through the city, and we are involved in negotiations with them as well. And we provided you a chart about them. And as you would expect, our largest negotiations are dealing with the Department of Procurement and OCC. Our next division is part of the Business Services Group as well as the Contracts Group, but this is real estate. And the city is very actively engaged in doing a lot of different property-related matters involving support for parks, as well as the mayor's housing initiative, trying to reclaim blighted properties for various housing, proposed housing, low-income and affordable housing initiatives. And we've categorized the real estate matters by the types of matters, from easements all the way to legislative items that are needed. The next one in the Business Services Unit is our Legislative Administrative and City Council Matters. That one is represented by the whole department, but is basically led by Amber, who does a lot of legislative support, as you're familiar, and attending a lot of client meetings and dealing with personal... Review of personal papers that City Council members create. Our next group deals with our Municipal Governance Team, and that team handles what's happening with finance, public safety, the Solicitor's Office, and the city clerk. And we've been dealing with several different varieties of measures, everything from annexations all the way to Open Records Act, and then all of the bonds that you all have approved have gone through this department for review. Our next department is Labor and Employment, and our metrics for quarter one reflect that they had a total of 272 matters. And then we provided advice and consent on everything from hiring, terminations, grievances for 136 matters, and we closed out 43. This has been a particularly active quarter for that department. As you know, we were without a commissioner for part of that time, and it's just got backlogged on Law Department to help out. But now we have an interim commissioner. We hope that things will be resolving quickly. Our next unit is the Operations Department, and the first division is Transportation, Public Works, and Save. And they are also very busy. There are 723 matters involved, Transportation, Public Safety, and Save... Public Works, excuse me, and Save. And that's because, as you know, the city is doing a lot of work on roads and projects, dealing with streets, bridges, just all types of things, and dealing with all types of matters involving the Department of Watershed Management, including those matters involving RM Clayton and other facilities that require contracts and meetings and negotiations. Our next group is the Watershed, and that particular group, I've mentioned to you already, they had a total of, I think it's different types of matters applied. They have, hmm, the Appeals Board for the Watershed... The Water and Sewer Appeals Board matters were listed down there. They have Repairian Buffer Technical Review Panel, and that's about getting... Issuing permits to bill within a certain distance from a river or water source. And then the other itemizations of matters are shown in the Legal Advice column provided to Department of Watershed and related boards. And then Aviation, they had 1,087 matters. Most of them are dealing with client meetings and advice and consent. And then we have contracts and other areas that we deal with in support of the airport's operations. A lot of that also deals with concessioners. You all have asked on a quarterly basis that we provide you information for how much we're spending on outside counsel, and we have a comparison of last year's number and this year's number, and it went up about 2%. And there was basically a lot of increased expenditures in the Aviation Fund because of the airport-related matters that we've had to deal with. When we have large-scale litigation or complex litigation or environmental litigation, we don't handle those in-house. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions or concerns? Ms. Hooker, we would like to thank you on behalf of the City Council. Thank you for being very accessible. Your staff has been really tremendous in helping us navigate some of those very important issues that we have faced within the City of Atlanta, so we'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also, thank you to Ms. Robinson for being accessible. Questions? The Honorable Amir Faroki.
Thank you, City Attorney Perkins Hooker. Can you talk briefly just about staffing in the department, number of vacancies, kind of where you are with your team?
All right, we have 80 positions in our team, and I think we're at 78. We have two positions that we are hiring for. Really, I think it's three. Two attorneys, one will be... An offer has been extended for... In our Real Estate Services Group. And then another attorney is going to be looked at for hiring in litigation. And then we have a paralegal in litigation, but we're stable. I think we've had more people now than we've ever had as far as personnel.
Great. That's good news. Thank you. And I should know this, because I'm in year seven of being on City Council, but either today or in the future, can you provide an overview of how you have the Law Department organized? You mentioned the real estate group as a litigation team. Obviously, we interact with Attorney Robinson for a whole host of matters, but just to give us a little bit of an org chart slash Division of Labor within the Law Department would be helpful.
All right, I can provide you with the organizational chart that conforms to these five different divisions that you had to report on, but that's only five of them.
Thank you.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond, followed by the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam City Attorney, for your report. I just have a question. We do pay an inordinate amount of claims every year, year in and year out. Does the Law Department ever go to the departments and give or ask... Well, not ask, but provide a, I guess, a symposium, a workshop to some of these affected departments that are... That have the highest number of claims? Do you all do any preventive counseling to those departments?
We do have training programs based upon the subjects that we find ourselves confronted with. We have been to the Police Department to talk about driving issues. Sometimes they're just in fender benders, nothing deliberate, intentional, but we do deal with that. But most of the claims that we have are frivolous claims from the public... But most of the claims that we have are frivolous claims from the public who file a claim because they hit a pothole or they ran into one of the steel tops. That's the overwhelming majority of the claims, and that's why it's so many on your agenda to dismiss, because you can't sue a city for anything that they don't have prior knowledge about. So unless there's something that someone says that there is a gap in the street or hole in the street or uncovered problem that's creating problems for people's tires, axles, or whatever, we don't have an obligation under the law to take care of it in advance. Because it's so big, you have to at least have prior notice. So that's the majority of our claims, and they don't have a forum to be training anybody. We do train Public Works and Watershed about issues that come up that are claims, valid claims. For example, if you ignore notice about a pothole, we do that, and they're familiar with that, those organizations, those departments are familiar with that. And then our team of people meet with them regularly. So we're not just in the Law Department on the fifth floor. We actually go to the department's meetings, and we sit in and provide advice and counsel and talk to them regularly. So we have an ongoing relationship with the clients, but then we do have training programs.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Mr. Bond asks most of my questions. I just want to say thank you for being able to work with you and the way we're working together, and for Attorney Robinson for explaining and working with me through some of these legislation that we have coming forward. So thank you again. The work we've been able to do since you've come forward has been eye-opening to be a councilperson at this time. So thank you again for your work together.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you, very well done. Thank you very much. And we have saved the best for last. The Department of Corrections, Chief Elder Dancy, thank you all so much for what you all do in this community and around the community. We see you. You all have run a top-notch facility, and we'd like to hear from you today, Chief Elder
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and other distinguished council members. I am interim Chief Elder Dancy. I'll be providing a first-quarter report for the Department of Corrections, which covers July through September. So we'll move to the first slide. In an effort to highlight our obligations, in an effort to highlight our obligations to our stakeholders, we always like to start with our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement is to protect the public while striving for excellence through exemplary customer service and promoting community environment. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and secure correctional environment, enhance public safety through partnerships with the community and law enforcement. And one example, as we move to the next slide, of our partnerships are going to be with Second Chance Partnerships. We continue to partner with our state DOC partners. Also, Emory Grady Psychiatric Department. Twice a week, they come out to connect with our detainees who have mental health challenges. And as you can see, they connected with 104 detainees during the first quarter. And then Emergency Management, as you know, this is ongoing, especially this time of the year. An example of that is the activation recently of the Warming Centers. We continue to partner with this team, and will likely activate again towards the end of this week because of the weather conditions. And additional partnerships on the next slide, you'll see, of course, we have ongoing a partnership with Atlanta Police Department, especially with Transportation, and partnerships in their joint operations centers during activations. Viral Solution, we've continued that partnership, even though it's coming to an end. Of course, they were very instrumental in assisting us during COVID, but at this point, that contract will end, but we are very appreciative of their partnership. However, we will rekindle our partnership with Someone Cares. They will be providing assistance and empowering individuals living with HIV/AIDS and other health disparities to achieve better health outcomes. So we're looking forward to that renewal. And the next slide, in partnership with the Office of Sustainability and Resilience, we are providing assistance for our detainees who are indigent or experiencing financial challenges with arranging transportation. And as you all know, the annex, trying to get arranged transportation from the jail to the annex has been very difficult for some of our detainees, so this will assist in that space. So we are really happy with Chief Farley and her team with partnership with this ride-share opportunity. And of course, we provide mortar passes for our indigent detainees as well. And in the next slide, Training and Employment Development has always, have always been top priorities for the Department of Corrections. We took advantage of over, about 16 training opportunities this last quarter, and I'm not going to go through every one of them, but one I would like to highlight, our firearms recertification. As you see the pictures there on the right, the two bottom photos represent our firearms training at the Rockdale County Sheriff's Department Firearms Facility. And we just want to publicly thank them. They, over the last few years, they have been assisting us with our annual firearms training certification. So thanks again to Rockdale. The next slide is our Sergeant's Boot Camp. This is, although our sergeant position is a discretionary appointment, we've developed a competitive process for our qualified candidates. And this process includes participating in our boot camp. And I just want to thank HR. They were very instrumental in assisting us with putting this together as we tried to improve our leadership training, as well as our Grady and ACDC supervisor, project manager, command staff, and risk management, who also assisted with that training. The next slide is our employment and attrition numbers just for July through September of 2024. We, our numbers have continued to increase from July. As you can see, they have, are pretty stagnant at this point, but looking at where we were last year to this time, we are in a much better place. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank the administration and this council for your assistance. Our sworn numbers in July are 47 civilians, 59. August, 145 civilians, 61. In September, sworn numbers are 144 and civilians are 65. And currently, we have 39 vacancies, 22 civilians, 17 sworn. But, and currently, as of last month, I think we had a total of 211 employees, 148 sworn and 63 civilians. With our next slide, this is our in-court statistics. As we work to enhance our customer service and efficiency, as well as align with the mayor's pillows, I'm happy to report that we continue to successfully move forward with our electronic bonding process. And as you can see, the numbers there for this quarter, July 1st through September 30th, our in-court online bonding opportunities provided over 627,000 payment dollars with 335 payments. And then our total, I'm sorry, our cash amount is a little over 196,000 for a total of over 823,000. And we also are looking forward to our e-bonding coming online before the end of this month, which will increase our numbers and as well as participant, bond participants. So again, thanks to this council for supporting that and moving that legislation forward. Our virtual statistic numbers, as you can see, we've increased from our FY '23 and '24, 25 numbers are showing 3,101, and we attribute that mainly to the new changes with the bond reform. No longer are we allowed to provide those signature bonds. Now they have to appear before a judge. So the next slide is represent our booking average, and these are numbers that we report quarterly. FY '23, 1074. FY '24, 1137. And FY '25, 933. And our average daily population, as you see, it has gone up. FY '23, 51. FY '24, 56. And FY '25, the average population is 100, was 118. Now, that number's a little skewed because we did house on our emergency MOU about, temporarily about 70 Fulton County detainees after they had a plumbing flood and issue. So those numbers are baked into that, but I would say our average population now is somewhere around 80, in the mid-80s. So our next slide shows our ACDC 15 top charges from July to September, and this has pretty much been consistent with traffic, driving while license or suspended is our highest number. And I always like to explain that these numbers can be a little skewed as well because one detainee can have multiple charges or multiple offenses. This next slide was requested, so we pushed, reporting on the demographics for ACDC and Fulton for first quarter and last quarter. As you can see, the results are both are showing that there's a higher number for black male detainees with an average age of in the mid-30s. The next slide represent our numbers in our governmental agency with Fulton County. Currently, we have 377 detainees, 245 females, and 132 males for a total of 377. And of course, as you know, that Fulton County is solely responsible for security, food service, and medicals, medical. And this is our new Office of Professional Accountability location. We were, prior to this, our location was at ACDC, so we are happy that now we are detached and provide our customers an opportunity to visit outside of our jail facility at 98 Mitchell Street. We just recently opened that location and want to thank Dean for their partnership with And these are just some community engagement and outreach that we performed beyond the walls during the last quarter, as we are always happy to assist. This one was with National Night Out with, in partnership with APD and Atlanta Fire Rescue. And the next one was a collaboration with Code Enforcement and DOC with outside details, and you could see the locations there on the left where we assisted. And the next one is a HelloFresh event with Councilmember Bond, and this is just one photo example. We continue to partner with Councilmember Bond and his team, but this one was on July 17th of 2024. And then this one is with Councilmember Boone, Madam Chair Boone, at Jackson Memorial Church. This was a food drive we assisted with on July 18th. And a reading circle at City View Scholars Academy at Memorial and Central, where our team participated. Dr. Battle, who's in our inmate service team, and Ms. Kate, along with our intern Diamond And that's it. Again, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity. And as we come to the close of 2024, thank you for your continued, and this body for your continued support of DOC. We are very appreciative, and we look forward to your visit, the tour on Thursday. Thank you for arranging that.
Thank you, Chief. And if you would introduce your staff, if you all would come on up to the mic, staff come on up. They are tremendous. They go well beyond the call of duty for what they do for the citizens of Atlanta. They run a decent, safe, and clean, very clean facility, and for that, you are to be commended. They have good food, they have good attitudes, and they like people. So we want to thank you all so much. If you all would just tell us who you are, you all do a great, great job. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Captain Christie Jones, Chief of Staff.
It's Christie Jones, our Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Natasha Johnson over Operations.
Thank you, Chief Johnson.
Good afternoon. Deputy Chief Timothy Quiller over Administrative Services Division.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Director Kwanah Williams. I am over the fiscal operation as well as career development and storage management.
And we see you all, all over the community.
Major Sean Martin over Special Operations.
Again, congratulations. Thank you all so much. This is our last meeting of the year. Chief Elder Dancy, the facility you run is magnificent, and you all treat people with decency and respect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
I just want to add to what the chairwoman has just said. She, Dancy, and your staff, you all do an excellent job, and of course, the work you do beyond the walls is tremendous. You know, people often forget in the exterior the kind of impact that the Corrections Department has on this city. And so we just want to give you your kudos and thank you for all the help and support that you provided, and also for running a smooth and professional operation. We deeply appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions or concerns? The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
I got a couple of them. Chief, thank you so much for the work you're doing, and thank you so much for the hours that y'all's putting in. The first question I had were around detainee transportation efforts. Is the ride share, what does that exactly look like? What does that look like?
So it's for, with a company that provides rides in an electric vehicle. This is in partnership with Office of Sustainability, who was able to get a grant. It's a grant opportunity. So basically, we publish this throughout our facility to all of our detainees. Once they exit, once they bond out, or once they are exiting the jail, this is an opportunity for us to provide transportation for them within that 10-mile radius. Or of course, we do also provide mortar passes if they are in need of a mortar card.
So guaranteed, you make sure folks have a way to get to their destination?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next, I want to talk about departmental partnerships. The, and the partnership I want to talk about most was the, well, two partnerships. First, thank you for the Someone Cares Atlanta. And I know we're leaving Viral Solutions, and that has some federal funding as well, or was that all city funding?
No, that's, the Viral Solution actually, they actually provided service. This was a funding that they had privately to assist at our jail facility. And so they were coming out to the precinct, I'm sorry, to the jail twice a week to provide vaccination opportunity and COVID testing opportunities for our detainees and employees.
So, and Someone Cares Atlanta, making sure we take care of HIV/AIDS, which are affecting black and brown folks like no one else in America, how are we able to make sure that we're able to fund it? Just want to make sure that we're thinking ahead, that I'm thinking ahead as we bring into this new thing that we need so desperately in our ACDC.
So they are funding this opportunity. Again, this is a private organization who has agreed to assist us in this space, and they assist other prisons and jails as well. But we are definitely happy to renew this relationship. We've done it in the past, but this is an opportunity not just to only provide assistance with HIV and AIDS, but other health concerns, public health or mental health issues and challenges they may have, as well as housing assistance. They provide that opportunity for our detainees also.
Is there a way that we can add the PAD partnership for the, for the, for the center that we've partnered with them in ACDC?
So PAD will be connecting with the Diversion Center, which will open soon, which is located at ACDC. We are not directly involved with that. They work mainly in part- They work mainly in partnership with APD on those charges, those minor charges to divert detain, those detainees through that process, but they will actually physically be working with Fulton County, Grady, at the Diversion Center once it goes live.
Is there a way for us to work with them at all there? Because I'm just thinking about some folks who, and I wouldn't have the answer for that. You can tell me, is there a way for us to work with them there?
Work with PAD?
Yes.
So mainly those charges, and Chief Johnson has worked with them in the past, but mainly those are, those charges are moved through APD. Once, I'm sorry, once APD make those charges, then they are connected with courts, and then they will have that opportunity to divert those detainees.
Okay, last question, last partnership I want to talk about was the lease with Fulton County. I know that the lease is, like any other lease, it comes, it has a lease maturity date, and I know this lease is about to end, in 2025?
Twenty-six.
Or do you?
So it's a four-year opportunity that we have, and it started in December of 2022, so it will end in December of 2026.
So my questions are, as we enter into the last year, similar to how we went into 2022, and we looked at it, are we going to start looking at how this lease ends, or if we're going to extend it? Is 2025, something I just want you to think about, if this is something you all could start thinking about in 2025, because like anything else, a lease is supposed to end, and if it's supposed to end, I want us to start thinking about how do we end it? Because it took us about a year to rev up to the numbers, so it may take us a little bit more time to rev the numbers back down, because I assume that, you know, the lease is in, and they'll be in position to walk in different directions. But I appreciate you, and I just want to make sure I put that on your mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, this meeting is the last meeting of the year again. Chief, thank you so much. We would like to thank those staff members that assist us with making sure that our agendas and our technology are running smoothly, so we'd like to ask Mr. David Johnson if you'd stand. Thank you so much. Come on, David, come here. Nika, Warren, come on up. We want the, our viewing audience, Ms. Floyd, and all of our neighbors at home to say hello and see you all, Ms. Amber Robinson, and Ms. Latoya Joseph. These are the folks that do the hard work and heavy lifting. We want to thank them so much, so much. Can you all turn around so we can see, the staff can see you? Can y'all turn around so the people at home can see you all as well? And we'd like to thank our Chief of Staff, Santana Kimson White, Zena Lewis, our Communications Chief, Phyllis Jackson, Mr. Andrews, Tiffany, Bill, that entire team for all they do in our Clerk's Office. Let's not forget the wonderful staff in the Clerk's Office. We would also like to thank Chief Darren Sheerbaum, Assistant Chief Thalys, Chief Roderick Smith, his staff, Mr. Reed with the Atlanta Citizens Review Board, who was here, our Corrections Team led by Elder Dancy, the Atlanta Courts Chief Judge Ward and his entire staff, Mr. Raines Carter, our Solicitor, and his entire staff. Thank you to the City of Atlanta Public Safety staff and all of those members in the Mayor's Office and City of Atlanta that helped make Atlanta the great place it is to work and play. This meeting is adjourned.